Good morning, welcome to Hardin County Commissioners Court. Today is Tuesday, September tenth, two thousand and nineteen. It is ten a.m. All members of the court are present and this meeting is called to order. If you want to please rise for the invocation by Commissioner Roberts, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Goodness gracious, Heavenly Father, thank you for all the many blessings you've given us. Watch over and guide us and direct us as we go about the business of this court. In Jesus Christ's name I pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner. Let us give down to item number six. Recognize Kenneth Davenport for twenty-seven years of dedicated service to Hardin County and wish him well in his retirement. Kenny is retiring as the longest-serving Chief Deputy Sheriff of Hardin County. I believe Sheriff Davis is going to present him with a certificate and I bet he has a speech ready.
Morning, morning, Kenny.
Well, congratulations, a milestone there. When the judge made the comment about longest-serving, I had forgotten about that.
He's never let me forget it.
Oh, really? From back in the years.
I made it longer than any sheriff's.
We'll talk to somebody else down there. Thank you so much for everything that you've done and that you continue to do.
Well, it doesn't feel like I've left, I'm still wearing a uniform, you know? But it was real easy coming to work all these years when you love the people you work with and the job, so I enjoyed it. And I enjoyed working with everyone. Every year. It was great. Back down.
Only ever wearing my photo bobby. And while we're recognizing people, I'd like to recognize Shirley Cook. Today's her birthday. Shirley, if you'll stand, we're going to sing happy birthday to you.
And Sheriff Davis is leaving?
Yes, ma'am.
Shirley, thank you so much.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Shirley. Happy birthday to you.
I'm thankful to have another one.
Mr. Cooper, thank you for reminding me of that.
Yes, sir.
Item number three, approved minutes of the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting, August twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen special meetings, plural, and the August thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen special meeting, all presented by Glenda Austin County Clerk.
So moved.
Have motion by Commissioner Roberts and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number four, cancel all registered claims from the August twenty-seventh, two thousand and nineteen regular meeting as requested, and approval of cash statement as presented. This is normally presented by Deborah McWilliams County Treasurer, but she's gone to a conference, so we have Ms. Joyce Lane standing in. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
I'm asking the court to release me of the liability of one million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eighty-two dollars and four cents. The cash report summary, the general checking account is two million, six hundred and fifty-one thousand, nine hundred and nine dollars and seventy-three cents. The tax pull general account has eight million, two hundred and fifty-three thousand, two hundred and eighteen dollars and ninety-eight cents, for a total of ten million, nine hundred and five thousand, one hundred and twenty-eight dollars and seventy-one cents. And the interest earned on the August tax pull account is nineteen thousand, one hundred and forty-five dollars and ninety-one cents.
Move it, please.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Roberts to approve as presented. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Lane. Item number five, authorization to pay county bills as presented by the county auditor Angela Gore. Good morning, Ms. Gore.
Good morning. The expenditures for Commissioners Court today are two hundred and fifty-three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-seven dollars and ninety cents. Attached is a list of additional bills in the amount of a hundred and sixty-three thousand, five hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirteen cents. The total expenditures and transfers are four hundred and seventeen thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and three cents. The gross payroll for September the twelfth is four hundred and fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-six dollars and sixty-two cents, and the total transfer for that payroll is five hundred and fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
Move to play the kind of move, say.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seven, consider adoption of resolution dash, I'm sorry, thirty-one dash nineteen, recognizing September two thousand and nineteen as National Suicide Prevention Month. Is Ms. Portman here? Do you have anything you wanted to say?
Uh, yes.
Come on up.
I just wanted to thank the Hardin County Commissioners Court for their support of Smittle Top and all our programs and services. Um, today is actually national, it's World Suicide Prevention Day, while the whole month of September is actually Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. Today, we're actually going to be at Lamar University with a few Baptists and a few other organizations, with a booth to promote suicide prevention, give tips to students and things like that, pass out pamphlets and things. We're going to be back at Lamar on the eighteenth for a suicide awareness kind of event. It's a, uh, we have like a skit and some speakers and stuff for students who attend to learn more about tips and preventions. Uh, we're sharing a lot of resources on our social media pages and, of course, we have our crisis hotline, which can be reached at one eight-hundred nine-three-seven eight-zero-nine-seven. That's also on our website. Um, I did bring a few other staff, too, they just wanted to thank you guys.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
On behalf of Smittle Top Center, we just would like to say thank you for allowing World Suicide Prevention Day to be on today. Thank you.
Thank you all as well.
Would you mind if I get a picture of these folks in front of you?
Sure don't. Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve the resolution and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously.
No, I can see everyone. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Portman. Item number eight, consider adoption of resolution thirty-two dash nineteen reaffirming county official support for the Hardin County's accident prevention plan.
Motion approved.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number nine, discussion impossible, action to set salaries, expenses, and other allowances of all elected officials and precinct officers. You should have a copy of the public notice that was published in the Silvy B. on August the fourteenth, two thousand and nineteen. Uh, this goes along with all of the salaries included in the proposed budget for all county officials. And, uh, requires a motion.
So moved.
Have motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. I'd just like to add that was also emailed out to all elected officials and precinct officers, and, uh, I don't think I received any response from anyone regarding that. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number ten, discussion impossible, action to adopt the fiscal year two thousand and twenty Hardin County budget. We've had two public hearings concerning the budget. The last one was at nine-thirty this morning. And, uh, from the proposed budget to the, what I call the final budget, or what's been presented to the court for adoption this morning, there have been some changes made, and I'll ask Ms. Gore to read those off at this time. And you should have a copy of it in your packets with the number ten in the upper right-hand corner.
The following changes were made to the proposed budget. The mixed beverage tax revenue account increased by five thousand. The Sylphy Independent School District Tax Commission increased by two thousand. Lumberton ISD Tax Commission increased five thousand. West Hardin, um, School District's Tax Commission increased by three thousand. The interest in, um, the revenue account increased by three thousand. The county's portion of the state fees increased by five thousand. The sheriff increased by one thousand eight hundred. The county clerk's fees increased by forty thousand. The Constable Precinct One fees increased by a thousand. Constable Precinct Five fees decreased by a thousand. Constable Precinct Six fees increased by a thousand. JP One's fees increased by two thousand. JP One traffic fees increased by five hundred. Housing juvenile decreased by ten thousand. The jail phone commission decreased by eight thousand five hundred. JP Two's fees increased by a thousand. JP Three's fees increased by a thousand. JP Three traffic fees increased six hundred. JP Four fees increased a thousand. JP Four traffic fees increased one hundred and fifty dollars. JP Five fees increased by one thousand five hundred. JP Five traffic fees increased by two fifty. JP Six fees increased by two fifty. Interest earned increased by twenty-three thousand sixty-five dollars. So the total revenue increased in the general fund by seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars. The following expenditures changed. The dispatchers in the general fund decreased by sixteen thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars. The vow of matching grant increased by two thousand and fifty. The health insurance retirees decreased by two thousand and fifty. The salary in the district eighty-eighth quarter decreased by one thousand nine ninety. The FICA taxes decreased by one hundred and fifty-three dollars. The retirement decreased by two hundred and ninety-two dollars, and the supplemental debt decreased by four dollars, for a total of expenditures that decreased in the amount of eighteen thousand, nine hundred and twenty-five dollars. So the general fund is now balanced, and it does not require any, um, additional funds from the fund balance to do so, because those two, the revenue increased and the expenditures decreased by a net of ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and forty. We also changed the name from internet service to cable internet. And then the other fund that changed was the dispatcher fund seven thirty-five. The revenue side, the ESD Two decreased by ten thousand, eighteen dollars. The ESD Five decreased by five thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars. Coontz decreased by five thousand, two hundred and eighty-five. Lumberton decreased by twenty-three thousand, seven forty-eight. Sire Lake decreased by four thousand, five forty-seven. The local match decreased by sixteen thousand, four eighty-six. So the total revenue decreased in fund seven thirty-five by sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. On the expense side, the salaries dispatchers decreased by forty-four thousand, one hundred and twelve dollars. The FICA tax decreased by three thousand, three hundred and seventy-five dollars. The health insurance decreased by ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Retirement, six thousand, four hundred and sixty-two dollars. Decrease in the workers' comp insurance decreased by five hundred and eighty-three dollars. Unemployment tax decreased by sixty-seven. Dental insurance decreased by six hundred and fifty-one. Life insurance by sixty-six dollars. Supplemental death by a hundred and six dollars. And the total expenditures for fund seven thirty-five decreased by sixty-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-nine dollars. And the only other changes were made to the first two sheets on our tax summaries, um, to balance our budget and to, um, change, um, our fund balance, because we added some line items in our fiscal year eighteen, nineteen year.
Thank you, Ms. Gore. Are there any questions or comments concerning the changes made to the proposed fiscal year twenty budget as read off by the auditor? If not, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt the budget.
So moved.
Have motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. This requires a record vote. I'll start with Commissioner Pell, since he made the motion. Yes or no?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Kirkendall?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
No.
And the chair votes yes. So that motion passes four to one. Any other discussion concerning the fiscal year two thousand and twenty budget? Item number eleven, consider impossible, approve order to adopt a tax rate of point five-eight-zero-zero per one hundred dollar valuation. The auditor will provide a breakdown of tax rate for debt service and maintenance and operations. Ms. Gore, would you go ahead and provide that breakdown?
Yes. The general fund tax rate is point four-seven-three-nine-one-zero. The jury fund tax rate is point zero-one-four-three-eight-one. The Roden Bridge fund tax rate is point zero-eight-one-four-nine-three, for a total maintenance and operation tax rate of point five-six-nine-seven-eight-four. The interest in sinking fund tax rate, which is the total debt service fund tax rate, is point zero-one-zero-two-one-six. So the total tax rate is point five-eight-zero-zero-zero.
Thank you, Ms. Gore.
Who would adopt the tax rate appropriations? Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper to adopt the tax rate as presented. This also requires a record vote, starting with Commissioner Pell.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Kirkendall?
No.
And the chair votes yes. This motion passes four to one as well. Any other discussion concerning the tax rate? Move on to item number thirteen. Discussion impossible action concerning the setting of two thousand and twenty county holidays. Yep, I missed number twelve. Let's go back to that. Discussion impossible action concerning order setting day of week and location of regular term schedule of Hardin County Commissioners Court meetings for fiscal year two thousand and twenty. I have two, uh, orders prepared for this, and the reason is, um, the October, what date meeting?
Seven.
October seventh meeting. It's actually, okay, it's October eighth meeting. That is the, uh, day that, uh, I think most of the commissioners are going to be at the County Judges and Commissioners Annual Conference in Galveston. I know at least two of them are, and they told me. So I thought about setting that meeting date for the seventh on Monday. And then there's a holiday. It's December the twenty-fourth, it's Christmas Eve, so I also propose that we set that meeting for Monday, December twenty-third. So other than that, all of our meetings would be every second and fourth Tuesday. And it's up to the court whether or not they want to change that October eighth date to October seventh. Have two orders ready, whichever we decide, we'll sign the one that we decide on. Are y'all going, either one of y'all going to that conference in Galveston?
I'm going to be in Wakefield.
So we wouldn't have a quorum, so we need to go ahead and set that for the seventh, if that's agreeable to everybody in the court. So we would sign the second order that's been prepared, and that would set that meeting date for Monday, October the seventh. And then we also have the other Monday, December twenty-third. Other than that, they would be every second and fourth Tuesday at ten a.m.
Move to approve as modified.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Kirkendall. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Now we set the holidays. Number thirteen, discussion impossible action concerning the setting of the two thousand and twenty holidays. We have the, uh, draft in our packets. Everybody's had time to review that, or if not, you can review it at this time.
Move to approve. Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fourteen, discussion impossible action to approve the job description for professional counselor in the adult probation department. Ms. Mendes Sable, you provided us with the, uh, job description. Anything that... Is this a new position?
Kevin had, um, takes contact.
Okay. Okay. So this is a new job description?
Yes.
Has, uh, come in to review the job description?
Yes, sir.
You love it? I moved up for a second. Have motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Pell. Any discussion?
Kevin, is the therapy working?
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number fifteen, discussion impossible action to accept the Lumberton Municipal Utility District order calling for, calling an election for designation of a defined area, authorization of unlimited tax bonds for the defined area, and maintenance taxes for the defined area. Ms. Austin, this is, uh, an order that was already adopted by the board, and we just need to accept that, so it's on the ballot. Is that correct?
Yes.
Any discussion? If not, I move to approve.
Say.
Have motion by the chair and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion?
Which was this for?
That is for that, uh, new area where the subdivisions going in. They called for that bond election. Where they're going to move one resident in to vote on it. We didn't have to accept it, so it's on the ballot. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Passes four to one. Number sixteen, discussion impossible action to accept an order calling a bond election to be held by the Lumberton Independent School District, making provision for the conduct of the election and resolving other matters incident and related to such election. Uh, this is also a bond election by the Lumberton ISD. What's the total amount of that election? Or does that include it in here?
Anyway, this came from their board, didn't it?
Yes, sir. It's been adopted by their board.
Move approved.
Have motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number seventeen, presentation of the Adverlorm's collection report, an updated refund and adjustment report for two thousand and eighteen. Ms. Cook? Good morning.
Good morning.
Happy birthday again.
Have a easy one.
Ma'am?
Go easy. This is just some more information for you. Uh, I wanted to explain a little bit after we had had a discussion last Commissioners Court. This, uh, spreadsheet just gives you our comparison from same timeframe last year as this year. And we show, uh, your total current and delinquent. We show an increase of point zero-zero-zero-nine. Increase in dollars total is six hundred and forty-one thousand, thirty-six dollars and eight cents. That's the total current and delinquent. Just wanted to show you that. The next page is the collection summary that comes from capital appraisal, which backs up those numbers of my spreadsheet. This is for the two years, two thousand and seventeen to eighteen, and then eighteen to nineteen. There was a little question about, uh, some adjustments that were made. Uh, I have another copy of a paper that will show, um, the adjustments matching my report, matching, um, capital appraisals report. This next page is, um, refunds that are to be issued this month if the school districts approve, or if we're waiting for, my handwritten note at the bottom, they will be issued this month if the taxpayer signs and, uh, school districts approve. This is the county we're waiting on, uh, four thousand, forty-one dollars and thirty-two cents. It should be issued this month.
But the four thousand, forty-one dollars is just refunds from the county? That's not the school district or anybody else?
That is. But the county's already approved everything they have to approve. We're waiting now on a couple of school districts to approve.
Okay.
This sheet, uh, this is refunds showing the total refunds that we have done, uh, from October two through August. And that gives you that total refund was a hundred and thirty-four thousand, three oh four fifteen. That forty-nine thousand, three hundred and twenty-four dollars, eighty-seven cents was the compressors, which, but the balance of eighty-four, nine seventy-nine, that is high. We have issued more, much more refunds than we have in previous years. This last page just shows you commissions. This is commissions that we, uh, collect in our office. This is a total two hundred and fifty-two thousand, two hundred and sixty dollars and twelve cents. That goes into county revenue, and it gives you a list of what commissions we have collected for actually being a tax assessor for the other seventeen entities that we collect for. So I just wanted to bring these to you, and, uh, if anybody needs to visit with me or anything, we'll be more than happy to.
I just want to make a comment concerning the refunds.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, one thing I learned when we met with, uh, whenever Shirley met with me and, uh, the auditor last week, this hundred and thirty-four thousand, three hundred and four dollars and fifteen cents of refunds, that never, that money never does come to the revenue side of the, uh, county budget. So if, uh, Shirley collects a hundred thousand dollars this week, and she has to refund somebody ten thousand dollars, only ninety comes to the, uh, Adverlorm tax collections in the budget. So, uh, when it looks like collections are down, this is the reason I think that the collections are down, because we've sent so many refunds, and that money never does come through the county budget. It comes out of the amount she collects during that time, or that time period where she issues the refunds. And in talking to Shirley and the auditor, that's being handled properly, that's the way it should be done.
That's kind of, uh, I understand it. It's kind of, uh, tricky, the way that is handled, like you just said, Judge, but I asked, uh, Ms. Cook to give us this printout, uh, last year, and I think it's, uh, important that we look at that, because, uh, I would say she might disagree with me, but just from my observation, the majority of the refunds is mandated by statutes that's come through, that we have no control over. So, you know, it's not anything that we've done or the...
Oh, no, sir. We get a change docket from the appraisal district. It's a legal document that we get. Or we get a judgment, uh, from, uh, the district judge. Sometimes we get it through the district judge that, where someone has actually filed a lawsuit against the appraisal district to lower their value or whatever, for whatever reason. Which we don't have a choice, any of the... But, uh, that is correct. The refunds are taken out before the money comes to the county. So, uh, this, I just brought this, this is a hundred and six pages. I know you don't want it, but at least offered to give it to you digitally if you wanted it. This is adjustments that are made, and all of these, uh, accounts, accounts, accounts. These are the adjustments. Some of these are multiple years. This section right here is simply whenever they take out, like twenty years, taxes, delinquent taxes fall off. So you're going to lose that amount that's expected. This section right here is the twenty years that falls off in appraisal, uh, capital appraisal district group, excuse me, correction group. They actually take that out on map for us whenever we push the button. But anyway, if anybody has any questions or anything, and I'll be more than happy to do my best to answer.
I appreciate the information.
Okay. Anytime, anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Item number eighteen, discussion impossible action regarding the setting of sheriffs and constable fees to become effective January first, two thousand and twenty. Morning Sheriff, how are you?
One, uh, one thing that we've discovered, there's a couple of fees that are not being included and reported to the state, uh, every year that we want to, you know, go over, and I apologize for not having, we didn't catch these until right at the last end, and it has to do with our stray, our stray animals. Um, we've been, we've been following these guidelines, but it's come to our attention that it's actually not in that printed document. So I'll get you, uh, I'll get you a working, uh, printout of that to show, but I wanted to run them down. There's just a couple of few, bear with me. Um, we're going to, uh, notate and, and I hate to say add, because we've been doing this, but we need to add it to the list. Travel to the vet, this is for stray animals that are picked up. Travel to the veterinarian for testing, such as Coggins, it's a mandatory testing. As you're going to know, for some of the livestock, from the horses. Uh, travel to the vet for testing, it's fifty-five dollars plus one dollar per mile, plus the cost of the actual vet services. Fifty-five dollars is the standard price for the Coggins test, so that's not a, uh, if they have to go because they need other services, if they're injured, if they have a broke leg, or whatever reason, then it would be the actual cost of whatever the veterinarian's are paying for, plus a dollar per mile. Um, that's the fee that's reimbursed to our county stockman. He's, he makes, uh, he makes one dollar per mile to make that transport. Um, the second thing would be the actual collection of any stray animal. Uh, that's thirty dollars per animal. Uh, that's the fee that's, that's reimbursed to the stockman. If he comes out to the scene and picks up, uh, cattle, horses, mules, or goats, sheep or hogs, it's thirty dollars for the actual collection. Uh, the hauling per load, uh, again, is one dollar per mile, whether that's one animal or ten. Feed, uh, and daily care is fifteen dollars per day, per head.
Is that one feed, Sheriff?
That's...
Is it fifteen for the feed and fifteen for the daily care?
No, fifteen dollars total. That includes feed and the actual care, watering and wherever else needs to be confined. But, uh, it's fifteen dollars per day, per head. Uh, I'll get that to the court, should we can include that for the...
Do you want us to, because what we have does not include any of that. Do you want us to table it and take action at the next meeting? Or do you want us to approve as amended and you'll submit that?
Whatever is the court's pleasure. I'm going to put it as amended.
Say.
Have motion by Commissioner Kirkendall to approve the sheriff and constable fees for two thousand and twenty as amended and presented by the sheriff this morning.
And there was no other changes, by the way, on any of the other fees.
Thank you, Sheriff. Any other discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. And can you, uh, submit that to Glenda and Laura?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Item number nineteen, discussion possible action regarding recommendation from evaluation committee concerning proposals received for group health, dental, and life insurance benefits program. Mr. Sims, good morning.
Proposals were received and opened, I'm sorry, they were opened on August twenty-third, two thousand and nineteen, at two P.M. in the purchasing department, front office. Myself, Stacy Eckert, Erica Singletary, and Debbie Mendes Sable were present. We received two proposals, one from United Concordia Dental, and one from Texas Association of Counties. Uh, the United Concordia, they only offer dental, and they were higher than TAC. We also had a response from Hall Insurance. They emailed just stating that Aetna, Cigna, and Humana declined to make a proposal due to... They emailed just stating that Aetna, Cigna, and Humana declined to make a proposal due to large claims.
Excuse me.
The evaluation committee, who was, uh, Judge McDaniel, Commissioner Roberts, Judge Brewer, Aaron Tepper, Debbie Mendesabell, Judge Minton, Joe Cropper, Christie Biscamp, Matthew Minnick, Latasha Jones, and Katie Romero. Um, they met several times for discussion and whatnot and they were making, the recommendation is to renew with TAC.
Moving approved.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. I wanna thank the, uh, committee for all the time that they spent working on this. Uh, I was surprised that we only received the one competitive proposal from Texas Association of Counties and that the others declined. So I think it's worth noting that we tried really hard to do, uh, get a better job on our insurance and, uh, we are apparently not very effective to insurers. Item number twenty, discussion impossible, did we vote? I did. Motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Sorry about that. Item number twenty, discussion impossible action to negotiate a modification from a five-tier to a four-tier group health insurance benefits program with Texas Association of Counties and if approved, permission for the county judge to sign renewal documents.
So moved.
So originally, when we were, when they offered a renewal, the renewal offer was four-tier and then we went out for proposals and the proposal that they provided was a five-tier. And I think there's already been some talk with TAC about it and they're still open to letting us renew it in a four-tier plan, which is what we're used to.
I'm sorry.
That's all right, we have a motion by Commissioner Pell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Cooper. Commissioner Kirkendall?
So what's the difference between the two?
It has something to do with the employee only, then employee child, employee family, and then there's employee and number one child.
The renewal documents that we have from TAC, uh, the renewal documents we have from TAC is to stick with the four-tier plan. The proposal has the five-tier plan. That is actually gonna make insurance for about thirteen employees on their family benefits, uh, higher than it would be on the renewal. So to negotiate this back down to a four-year, uh, four-tier plan brings that rate back down and it saves them about two hundred dollars a month. And in talking with TAC and with the county attorney, this was the way to make sure that we get those renewal rates as the best rate possible. Didn't mean to over, overtalk you there, Debbie, but that's the way I understood it, is that correct? Any other discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Sims. Item number twenty-one, consider possibly approved request to purchase a two thousand eighteen Caterpillar motor grader, serial number zero eight eight five, for Roden Bridge two with trade-in of two thousand fourteen Caterpillar motor grader, serial number ending in zero two zero three. If approved, this purchase will be made utilizing the buy board cooperative purchasing program with total purchase price less trade-in being one hundred forty-two thousand fifty-six dollars and fourteen cents. Eighty thousand will be paid down during the fiscal year nineteen current budget out of Roden Bridge two department and the remaining balance will be financed for a term not to exceed four years. Commissioner Kirkendall?
I appreciate the thoughtful consideration of this. We got a, uh, motor grader that's causing a lot of issues and then, uh, using the, the tier four DEF fluids, this was a tier three and I'd like to go to that, so...
Motion approved. Second. That motion by Commissioner Cooper and a second by Commissioner Roberts, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Item number twenty-two, discussion only of any other item, not on the agenda without taking action. Just like to remind the, uh, court and anyone else who's interested that the, uh, Southeast Texas Regional Planning Commission had the workshop this morning at eleven thirty and they're gonna feed us. And the purpose of the workshop is to discuss the requested move by Jasper County from the DPs Texas Council of Governments to the Southeast Texas Council of Governments. So anybody who's interested in, uh, information on that, please attend that workshop at eleven thirty today at the planning commission. When is the, uh, when is the health fair, Debbie? Thank you, and so everybody should have information on that. I wanna thank the health department and Regina Bolton and everybody that worked with her on putting that on. We appreciate it.
Moving adjourned.
Second. That motion by Commissioner Pell and a second by Commissioner Cooper to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
You going down there?
Have a good day.
And swing by the bridge and check, see if y'all...
Yes. Yep, finger.
Alright, man.
The only one that said they're not coming is English, he said he could finger.